Good evening, everybody. I will open the meeting of the North Whidbee Pool Park's Recreation District at 6:34 PM on Thursday, the 26th. Present are Commissioner Holly, Commissioner Harden, Commissioner Shingleton, the Chair, and Shannon.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Harden did last week's. So Commissioner Hoffmeyer, you got him tonight? You need to pay your brother.
I can do the audio.
Okay. Do the audio? Excellent. All right. Agenda changes, and I do have one. We will, thankful to an astute person, change the new business from executive session to a payroll discussion. So we'll do it in an open public meeting. That's the one change I had. Are there further changes to the agenda? Commissioner Harden?
No. I don't think so. Sorry. I have too many papers and two rule spaces here.
Understood. No further agenda changes. Public comment. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. I'm sorry. I failed to grab it. Done? All right. Moving on to approval of minutes.
Sir, Mr. Chair, I apologize if I missed the board issues.
I forgot board issues.
Okay. Can I ask us to go back to board issues?
You may very well ask us. Board issues, Commissioner Shingleton.
Oh, I have nothing. No, I'm just kidding. No, I just, the August date for our meeting, I just want to make clear I'm not going to be able to be here. So depending on what our situation is, my apologies, but I will not be here.
Thank you.
That is all.
Any other board issues? Commissioner Harden?
No.
Commissioner Holly? Commissioner Hoffmeyer? No other board issues? Thank you. Approval of minutes? We have no minutes to approve?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Commissioner Harden got hers done from last meeting in a timely, really timely fashion. Thank you. You're awesome.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the minutes be approved as written for the 5-July meeting.
Do I have a second? Discussion? No discussion. All in favor of approving the 5-July minutes as written? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Point out the type?
Unless I got to the top. But if I have to meet any of those.
There is a typo. Thank you.
Too late. It's already approved as written. Mr. Chair, I would like to amend my thing that was already approved, but...
Let's amend the motion. Yes.
To change April to August. Is it August?
It's July.
July, sorry. July. So I make that motion to amend. It needs a second.
Let me see that. Can I get a second? Thank you. Discussion? Didn't see that. I better go back through and make sure I didn't. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passing unanimously. Thank you. All right. Voucher review. Once again with the voucher review, I will tell the board that the...
Hello?
What?
The North Whidbee Community Pool and Recreation Foundation update. Are you laughing?
I did that. We are. We are. The North Whidbee Community Pool and Recreation Foundation update by Mr. Leeds.
Well, thank you. At our meeting on July 5th, afterwards, I got to share a few things with the commissioners, which was great because during a normal board meeting after they've spoken, or that was a special meeting, I wasn't able to have any time to talk to them. But before that meeting, which they didn't know, I had met with Lance Given, and he really brainstormed with me for a couple hours that day, and he really had this great idea to facilitate this meeting of all community members that were vested in reopening the pool and also supporting the levy and just the district in general, so that the message from the larger audience would get to the commissioners and that we'd all be in the same room. Certainly all five cannot be in the same room at one time. I just want to point that out. And I let Sean in on that, and he was great in making it come together. And on July, was it the 20th? The 20th, Friday, July 20th, we were in a room at the school district with Rotary, with the city, with the Chamber of Commerce, the Navy, people that all really want us to succeed more than anything and have tremendous knowledge and are there to help in so many ways, and it was just a great day. And I think we all are grateful for their support and do we have all the answers from that meeting? No, but I think we are certainly pointed in the right direction. I really do, for success. And I think this district is going to be much more than a pool in the end, and we're setting ourselves up for success. And we do have, that was just not a one-time deal. I mean, I think that we all felt that those people are there, that they're here to help. And reconnecting the district to greater partnerships can only help. So that was a great day. I was happy to see a little in there and greatly appreciative. I do have a wonderful check in my folder somewhere, $1,000 from Thrive. They really took it on on their own and said we want to help the pool, and I think you will see in coming days, my Facebook, they're, you know, they're an example, they're a role model for other businesses, and I'm just happy that they did that on their own and they really reached out to help. And they're almost in the same business of recreation, and yet they're supporting our efforts to grow and F Fitness also. So that's great. And I've been working with these two lovely ladies that agreed to chair the levy, and we are busy, 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 and great things on the horizon. I know there will be some debate tonight about the amount of the levy, and I will share with you that leaders in this community think that, at least in that room on Friday, the 20th, supported a higher figure, as do I, and you can explain that, but we're more than, we're going to be more than just a pool, and I believe that, and I will certainly help support those efforts to grow and evolve as the foundation. And certainly, we will be here continuing to raise money to support the levy in all future endeavors of the district. So all good things. There's tremendous hope, and I'm happy and excited, and we're all in this together, and I appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Now onto voucher review. I apologize for starting over. It's given over a lot tonight. That's not good. Voucher reviews. QuickBooks is still not reporting, Julia. What's going on with QuickBooks?
So QuickBooks freezes when we try to load it. I think it's actually an issue with our server and communication between the computers because we're having some other technical issues. I'm waiting for the IT to get back in touch with me to schedule when they can come out.
The IT we pay like $400 a month for?
No, we don't pay IT anymore. I believe that's probably part of what has led to this because the systems haven't been being maintained because of the lack of IT. I spent the last week on it, doing every self-help tool that the system offers. I've been on QuickBooks multiple times to no avail. So finally, Matt and I discussed it. There might be some other tricks to try, difficult stuff, it gives you all kinds of ideas, but I would not want to do anything to risk our systems. It's way out of my area of expertise at this point.
So how much are we going to be charged to get it fixed?
I believe when we used this organization before, it was $85 an hour. So it's less than the other IT was. Our previous IT would have been $100 per hour. This is one that Steve found before he left, that he done work for the district in the past. Hopefully, it's a good fix.
When do you think it'll be out?
I don't know. I don't know. I have not got a room there yet. I spoke with a gentleman there. He said that they would have some of them scheduled. That was the day before yesterday. If I don't get them, then by tomorrow mid-afternoon, I'll give them a call back and follow up.
And maybe get a quote and a timeframe from the other folks, too?
Possibly. In the past, this one was actually quicker, but definitely, at this point, I can't hardly be able, and I can't process the vouchers in a normal way. We've been lucky. The bills have been very small, that they come in at this time. Matt signed text for me so I could do it out of petty cash, and then we can just reimburse. And it's the golden bill, and I'm passing it out of the two that have come in.
Yeah, we need to get it fixed, though, so we've got that reporting for the county and everything, so that's...
There are many things I cannot do right now.
Okay. Had you reached out to the computer guy? The guy that set up all the computers at Home Connection? The name that's on a lot of computers?
Oh, Tom Johnson.
Yes, I couldn't remember his name. Brain fart.
I have not.
I wonder if he might have a quick answer. I just know he set up all the computers at Home Connection and stuff like that.
Whidbee Tech Solutions Operator.
Did I?
That's...
It might be worth calling Tom Johnson, just since he's so good at that stuff.
Okay. Thank you. So we're looking at with our voucher reports, just because it's not like a normal report. What did you do? Can you explain to us real quick, so everybody's got a packet, can understand what you did?
So you'll see for each week of June, the voucher report, this is what normally gets submitted to the county each week. So I was able to pull these from the packets that go to county, so that you guys have everything for the month of June. It's just in a weekly format instead of being in a long monthly list.
So that information going forward, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve district vouchers 7, 9, 8, 6 through 8, 0, 0, 3, in the amount of $4,127.62, and conduct payroll transfers from M&amp;O to payroll account in the amount of $5,427.21.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I would, I'm assuming this is our, a normal payroll monthly amount.
Yes.
If I can interject, it's actually slightly higher because that's included Joey's last check, so we paid out some stuff for that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just have a question about the patron water and why that's still, why that's so high.
So pool water and patron water for this one, I believe, actually had no consumption charge. There are certain things that we just pay a minimum every month for the sake of having water service to the building. So it's water sewer, garbage...
But we have two, we have two on here, and I'm assuming one is maybe from previous month, but we have, so basically, we have over $1,000. We have over $1,100 in just patron water, so not pool water, not dog park water, it's just patron water of which, so...
I believe it is two months, but it's just the way that the cutoffs were.
So it's kind of, so would I be correct in saying, as much as I'm still horrified by that number, but if it is what it is, it is what it is, but, so it's kind of like when you have an electric bill and like, hey, I wasn't home all month, and it's like, okay, but we're still charging you.
Yeah, it's the minimum charge for the water, just to have it come to this building. That was, that's the minimum charge.
That's insane. So it's approximately $555, no matter what we do. Do nothing, $555.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. It's helpful to know that.
On the one that just came, we have a consumption charge of like 2.0, or I can't remember if it's pool or drain water, but it's, and essentially, they'll actually down a little bit even with that, but it's, yeah, that's just a minimum basic that they charge you to have water service.
The things you learn. Thank you.
That is so boring.
What would they charge to... Ah, they can't, that's not the way we need it, huh? Oh, damn.
Can't shut it off.
That's annoying.
Further questions?
I thought there were partners that wanted to help.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Further questions? No? No. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Committee reports. Clover Valley Committee.
We didn't meet this last time.
Levy Committee.
I think we don't really know, I'm sorry, I just, I think we want to share things, but I think we need to get straight what we can share. I don't know, I'm not sure what we can share.
Well, previously, we were, last year, it was, sorry, maybe I'm off base here, but it was that in a board meeting, we couldn't talk about levy committee activity. If I'm off base, I'm cool with that, so...
Let me think about it. We, the commissioners, can be involved in the levy process. It's the employees that there's, and we can't take any money, so I think we can talk about it.
Okay, okay.
It's the only time we can talk about it is here, so we would have to talk about it here, so we can't talk about it anywhere else, so I would love to see...
This one, we could also, we could actually make some decisions if we need to make decisions.
Thank you. So Levy Committee.
I think that part of what we talked about at our levy committee is dependence on the new business to report a meeting with community properties, because we haven't got our community partners. Yes. Because we, if we're just working on the levy, we, yes, we want to do everything that we can to get it passed, talking about having opening, not an opening celebration, but a kickoff celebration. The weekend of, this is the 18th and 19th of August. We moved it to...
Liberty Weekend.
Liberty Day Weekend.
Yeah.
And, you know, we want that to be a big, huge celebration. We want to, at that time, have packets for people who will be, you know, let's say the three of us are, as Julie put it, admirals.
Well, we're actually... We have a strategy.
Yes.
We have a strategy.
You know, to, it's kind of a pyramid scheme, you will, but no, you know...
No scheme.
Yes, no scheme. But, you know, we, we get people who will, you know, say each get 10 people, and then all of those people will have a list in their, they'll have, you know, whatever, bracelets, they'll have maybe bumper stickers, some kind of handout cards, to give to all these 25 people that they're going to have sign a list saying that they will vote for, I mean, it's not something we can come after them if they don't vote for...
It's about asking people for commitment, and so it's about finding which, yes, it's finding, it's finding yes voters, people who are saying, yes, I will vote yes. And so part of the strategy is then to mobilize throughout the community and catch parts that maybe people I don't know, that somebody else knows. And so, and so there's a, there's a, so we have a strategy. We kind of picked a name, but we kind of may have picked a new name, so we're not going to go with that yet until we all agree on the name. Sorry. Yeah, it's a true story. But there's a lot of good, well, you know, it's very fluid, and, you know, so we're getting there, but it's, but really, this was a levy planning committee, and our intention is to firm up the planning and then start engaging folks. And that's, and that will happen in the next couple of weeks. So we know that, according to folks who have far more experience than we do at this, that we're a little bit behind, but, but we're, you know, we feel given, you know, given this, that we have a good strategy, that we should be...
Is there a POA in it?
When you, why don't you explain what a POA is or co- is?
I think it was more of, I didn't, sorry, when other people talk, sometimes you get, so it's like, when are we conversational?
That's true. There's a good, no, yeah, there's a good question.
I'm your chair.
Do we have another meeting? When can we expect to share stuff with the public or those interested, and when can they come to help?
And we'll decide all that at our next meeting. So again, we're in the planning stages. Our goal is to do that as quickly as possible. Our next meeting is between the three of us, and it's next week. So my point is that we're trying to, what we're trying to do is get our strategy together and get our strategy together so that we can accept help from other people, but we must have a strategy in order to do that. And it's actually, I mean, we're really excited about it, but we still have planning to do.
And I would say, in response to your question also, as soon as we have these little things taken care of, I will be sending out a list to, like, you are on the list of the people that have signed, you know, to be, because I know you're interested, and then I'm, you know, whoever we know, I know that Grace Tiffany has a list of people that were interested when we tried to pass the levy. She'll send out a notice. I mean, we'll all send out notice to as many people as we can, because we want as many, we want diverse...
We want 200. Lunchcap things.
Yeah.
So... I'm just looking for actions and milestones, because we're getting somewhere. I owe them.
And I think what I tried to say is that it was a planning meeting, and so that's, so...
So we've had our first planning meeting, we're gonna have another planning meeting, and then we're gonna open it up for everybody.
Correct. Correct. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else from the committee?
No, that's...
Awesome. Thank you. Eagle Scout project on unfinished business.
Action item review first, you're...
Well, we don't have, yeah, but we don't...
We don't have any action items. So I was gonna move on to unfinished business, if that's all right?
That's okay.
All right. Eagle Scout project, due to the actual permit requirements from the county, and the fact that our Eagle Scout is, his family's leaving the area on a timeline, he will not be able to finish that project. So that's sad for the scout and for every, for us as a district. Unfortunately, we didn't realize that building, a simple structure, that was that small would require that many permits, so he felt pretty bad, but I actually felt bad for him. He put a lot of effort, time into that project, and then unfortunately, couldn't come through with it because of the county permits. So unfortunately, Eagle project, I have my duty to inform you all that it will not happen. So that's the bad news.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we also add, though, so two things. One, to be very specific, we thought it was a matter of building a structure. It was a, it is a matter of a concrete pad with rebar, et cetera, and so that became something much, a higher degree of difficulty than the time allowed for. So just, but then the other part of it is, is we now have an action to put it to a local scoutmaster, if somebody would choose to take that up, and to submit that and say, here's, you know, we have the building permit, because we've got the building permit, we've got the building permit, there are plans, there are all of, you know, the pieces are there. It's basically the time and the complexity that we would need somebody to do. Should they be looking for a project, we can throw ours in the bank there. So I'd hate to see us lose, you know, we did make a little bit of form of progress, and I'd hate to see us lose that.
I will reach out to the local troop to see...
Who owns the plants, et cetera?
What's that?
Who owns the plant, the permits and stuff?
I believe the permits are owned by us, actually. Yes, because they have to be.
It's the only reason I was asking. I know about a year ago, the dog park people themselves were talking about getting together and building one as well, so maybe if they wanted to move ahead with it as well or something at some point?
Well, I think we'd have to, I mean, you know, we, perhaps, the plans were, the building plans were done by Jeff Waltman at P&amp;L, so...
Yeah.
Or rather, the permit was, sorry, the plans were pursuant, as we all know.
Further discussion? District property. Okay, reached out, and we can sell the district property, is what I found out, and we do have to have our lawyer write it up for us correctly, but we don't have to go through the auction as we did with consumable products like the, and I say consumable, that's incorrect, I'm sorry, products like the kayaks we did a couple years ago. So we just have to have the review, contract review, and approval from the lawyer to say that it's legal, but we can sell the district property. So that was my deliverable on that. Is there anything else? Any further discussion?
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So just to, just to update, I know, there should be a motion there, but let me just give the update, which was, so what we talked about last time was, what we need to move forward would be a PERC test, and that would be anywhere between $1,000 to $2,000, depending on the complexity of getting into the property to do it properly. And I know there have been other comments about wanting to do it, I would say around this time of year. I also do know that a lot of the folks that we would be, that we might be asking to do it if we did move forward with that, they are very busy right now. So it was, so in other words, if we want to do it, we're gonna do it. So I suppose with that, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve funds for a PERC test on the Highlands Drive property. So...
Discussion? So I'll bring up the fact that I, I'm pretty sure, and I can't, I apologize for not being able to quote the part of our bylaws, but it requires us to go out for three bids, depending on the price of, price of the PERC test. So do you have a general idea of how much PERC costs? Because I unfortunately do not...
Well, again, I, this is...
If it's less than $3,000, we're fine, I think.
If it's less than 3, we're fine.
Okay. I actually have, hold on, I have a copy of the bylaws here.
Awesome.
That ain't no lie. Hold on. That's why I got all my space in my papers here.
Is that what it is, Matt? 3,000?
I did.
If anything over 5,000, we have to have a three bid.
We have to have the three bids over...
If it's under 5,000, you can have...
Do we know how much a PERC test costs?
As I, as I stated, it should probably be between 1 and 2,000.
Okay.
And we have, we have a list of folks who provide those services, so...
Is it considered unsalable if we don't have PERC test?
Because it failed a PERC test back in the, so the last time it was done, it failed the PERC test, and so that meant, that means you wouldn't have any water, so I wouldn't buy it if it could...
Oh, it drastically hurts the price. It's like anything for property.
Wouldn't you want to run it out? Okay. So a PERC test will raise the price, and we probably absolutely want to do it, am I right?
Further discussion?
No, I just wonder if we want to attach a not to exceed power match, and if we're gonna approve it?
And then how are we going to go out for bid? Julia, you'll be able to take this out for bid, call?
We don't have to go for bids, though.
No.
But it's still on the bottom of the list, right?
Yes.
Sure.
And Julia, have time to do this. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I also have recommendations on the list. So there is a list. The list is long, and I have a couple of preferred people based on 40 years of, not a clearly line, but... on 40 years of, not a clear deadline, but 40 years of real estate experience. Okay, not bad.
There's only two or three that show up, so.
All in favor of approving the perk test for the property, signified by voting aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That's our first step forward. Thank you. District values. Never sent home for everybody to look for, look at last month, there was discussion on that. Julie?
I did not receive any names forward.
No, should have been there with last month's stuff.
The values that we sent out last month?
Pat, could you make copies? Okay.
Look at the rocks at him. Shane's out there somewhere. He wasn't here. Hopefully, my dad went. Hold him up to get him.
He was on his way. Thank you.
That's good.
If anybody else would like to share those with anybody, please go right ahead.
He said he knows that one. I think he does, actually. I think he forgot.
If anybody else would like to say...
He went underwater, he wasn't doing too well.
All right, so we talked about and approved the mission statement last month. We got to the values, and we decided to take a pause, X, and come back and revisit these after people had a chance to go home and look at them in more depth. Do we have comments, questions, suggestions, or changes for the values for the district?
I don't actually, Mr. Chair. I know I'm the one that asked for it, but I really don't.
No, we had talked about putting health and wellness first, which is why I drew that arrow on there.
Yes.
Yes, we had.
I saw that, and I was like, oh, okay, that's what we...
Right. So...
Yeah, I mean, I thought it nearly fits in the face of a cat or something even. I mean, it's pretty small, I like it.
So no further discussion, other than moving health and wellness first? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I think we adopt the mission statement and values as shown on this piece of paper.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Just further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, director vacancy. So we talked about the fact that we don't have a director, which puts us in a twofold position, two different negatives here. One, it limits the oversight we have of the two employees we have. We don't have a public employee, because technically, we need somebody between us, the board, and the two employees that we currently have. MRSC did say that due to the situation of the district, it is okay to have one of the board or the chair be the volunteer, go between, to provide oversight. However, I think going forward to help build public trust, that may not be the best way forward. That's my personal opinion. Obviously, there's five of us for a reason, so I think we need to discuss this going forward. We also need to talk about what we're gonna do in the future in the next couple of months. So what is the best way forward with a vacant director position? How do we want to handle this? We need to come to a conclusion this month on how we're going forward with that vacancy. So having said my piece, I throw it out there to you all for further discussion.
Well, you've given it some thought, I assume.
Yes, ma'am.
Why don't you tell us what your best thought is? What you would like to do if you were the king and could just say this is what we're gonna do, what would you do?
I would, I would look for a community member to come in as a part-time, somebody who has a, you know, to come in part-time as a director, limited number of hours per week, that has some established community ties, and is a community leader, that would be able to commit the time to that position, and that would help us moving forward as a facility, as a district, and also as we move forward towards the levy. So the reason I say part-time is that for us financially, that's what we can afford. We can't afford benefits, we can't afford more than 20 hours a week, we're asking a lot of somebody, so that's, that's what I'm looking, that's my suggestion, that's the way to go forward.
Can we afford 20 hours a week? All right, we're gonna run out of money, unless you read down the budget, and it's like we're not running out of money in December.
We are gonna run out of money in December.
Which means if we hire somebody else, we're gonna run out of money in November.
Yes.
Would it be possible to find the same community member to do maybe 15 hours a week or 10 hours a week as a volunteer?
We could ask, and we would have to ask not only, not only MRSC, but I think we'd have to ask the state on that one, because that's a position we've paid for in the past.
Oh, that's right.
MRSC, the whole, you can't, it's a right, what is that, right to suffer? You can't ask somebody to volunteer for something they would normally be paid, expected to be paid for.
Or is it, is it that, that person, if a person had been paid for it, you can't ask them to volunteer? If it's a different person, maybe it's okay.
There is, there is one other option, and it's not something we could ask. City of Oak Harbor's mayor is a paid position, for instance, the last two have donated that 25% of their paycheck back to the city. You never know. I mean, it might be that the community member out there that wants to do it, by no means needs a little bit of money. You never know. I mean, there's people out there that maybe, I don't, legally, you probably couldn't ask them that, but it would be nice.
You absolutely cannot.
It would be nice, right? It would be nice. They never know.
We'll hire you and you...
Open, open wish, maybe. I don't know. Open wish, we can do that.
It's a great point. It's a great point.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a point of clarification, is MRSC available to us?
It's available to anybody.
No, it's not.
Our tax money paid for it.
You have...
Look, your control board, look, your control board pays the taxes, the taxes for...
Since when? Sorry, I, um, municipal resource service center, actually, we were told after we switched to insurance companies, we're no longer...
No, 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 no.
I have emails of me asking about their services, and them saying, well, we can't, unless you're a part of a member organization.
That's great, because I've asked a couple times.
Okay, no, that's, I know that it is not germane to this issue.
Darn, that's probably...
You keep bringing it up, and so I, I wanted to, I'm like, why does he keep saying that? So...
Yes. I talked with them the same, probably a year or so ago, and I guess the answer was almost kind of somewhere in the middle. They were willing to point us towards lots of cases that had already been solved or settled or whatever, they were willing to do that. But being the municipal research or what have you, they, they didn't want to do any, they didn't want to spend any money researching something or litigating something if you're not a city, but they were willing to point us towards cases that have been settled.
So we're not a member, right, yeah, because we used to be a member.
Mm-hmm. So I guess the answer was somewhere in the middle.
When insurance is our insurance company, we're a member.
Yes. We'd like to thank MRSC for their kind contributions to the Martha Whidby Pool Park and Recreation District.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes. Is it possible to ask about partnership with the Dog Park Pool and Mayor Director or Aquatics Director? So are you thinking of timing?
It's actually a good idea. I don't know legally if we can do that as a district, though. So that's my suggestion. Ask them, well, we can't ask, but it would be nice. Further discussion from the board?
I agree with you, and I think it, I think it would be fine if somebody decided that they wanted to volunteer, and they were someone who we would select for that position anyway, but it would have to be closely managed. I think we, I think some of us have to remember a situation a couple of years ago where somebody wanted to be paid less, and what that actually, some of what that indicated, and this is not a personal attack from anyone, but some of what that indicated was actually what, kind of want to do less, and it's like, so, so part of it is, we have, unfortunately, we have certain work that needs to be done, and we need to ensure that there's, you know, whether you call it incentive or a, you know, let's call it a committed relationship, right? This is what you're gonna do, and this is what we're gonna give you for it, and we need to know that we're on even ground with that, with that situation. I realize we're in a precarious situation, but for me, that's, it's important to, to have that.
That's an, brings up an interesting thought, and without mentioning any names, maybe there are people that, maybe, maybe there are people out there with the working knowledge of the district, and, you know, for whatever reason, at that point in their life, had some stuff going on, and maybe they've got right, and maybe that's a person worth reaching out to, to thought. You know, he's been doing really well, and who knows?
Commissioner Holly?
I'm just trying to think of, it's like, I agree with you that we need, we need somebody, because we're just sort of barely, barely keeping afloat, and, but, and maybe, you know, we'll be able to sell the property, and that will make us enough money that we can pay for that, in a sense, we go forward thinking that...
Commissioner Harden?
Well, I definitely agree that we need somebody, and if we're talking about the possibility of volunteers, I don't think that if someone's a volunteer, that means they're less responsible, maybe they...
And I don't suggest that.
No, right, and I, yes, but I, I mean, I definitely think that we have to have high expectations of the person, whether we pay them or they volunteer, but could it be that we put out some feelers for people that, well, might be interested in part-time, or, you know, part-time paid position?
Temporary.
Temporary, yes. Or if people, we know some people that might want to volunteer, which no names are coming to my head now, but could we, would be, we be free as individuals to discuss that, or is that not permitted?
You, as an individual, can have any discussion you want with any individual.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not telling them the position is theirs.
Yeah, we take all five of, or a majority of the five of us, three out of five.
Right.
I got, I got one more thought on it, too. Probably more like European head model. So, so, so we're not supposed to have a volunteer for a position that we've paid in the past. However, Matt is an employee of the district, I guess the acting interim director, but, but what would a, what would an NED, a non-executive director, look like? Would that give us the oversight we need, and be able to, you know, be a board liaison, et cetera? They might have more, they might have more ability to go out in the community and, and talk with the Rotary and the Chamber and stuff like that, to where an executive director is a little wary to do so.
So you bring up a good point, and that's one thing we would have to do. We'd have to have a special meeting to set it, to define a PD for that person, with parameters, right? Whether it's paid or volunteer. So that, that would have to be done immediately.
Actually, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, but when we, the last time we appointed an interim director, we included that in the, in the, in the motion, included the duties, et cetera. So, I mean, it depend, I mean, I, my, unless someone feels differently here, my expectation would be that we'd be appointing someone in an interim role, and that's how we did it last time.
So we wrote the PD to the interim?
We clarified, it would be expectation or responsibilities with the, in the motion.
Okay.
Because I recall, and I think this came up a couple of months ago, there was some signature or auditor responsibilities that we needed to go back and fix after the fact, because we, we did miss something, but anyway, that is how we handled it last time.
Okay. And I would say, Commissioner Harden, I would, why, word of mouth is a great thing in building the public's trust, I think, doing what we normally do with, in this process money, which would be putting it out there, you know, in a public venue with the Whidby News Times, with the, how often does Whidby weekly? I don't know, but...
Really, Whidby weekly? You wonder how...
Do they come out every weekly, or is it more than that? It's twice a week now? See, there you go, it's bi-week, or it's twice a week, see, look at that, Commissioner Harden said every...
I actually read the paper, read it.
Twice a week?
No, she's talking about the Whidby News Times.
Whidby News Times? No, Whidby News Times, I know, but the Whidby Weekly, is it once a week? Is it, is it twice a week? Is it, are you sure it's a weekly? And they don't have a social media or anything else that they run?
I didn't, that was part of the question.
I've never looked at it, so, here's another block. So I think using, you know, our community resources is a good thing, and we want to put it out there for the broader scope of all, but I definitely agree that talking to people, word of mouth, it never hurts.
Oh, right, and I definitely think we need to publicly advertise for the, for the position, and so that we get, I don't know how, I wouldn't know how to word it exactly, because we don't know what we're paying the person, or are we setting a salary?
We would have to set a salary if we're gonna offer part-time.
A rate.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So just to your point, I've been actively looking, I ask people in the community, not because I believe that there was a job opening, but because I know at some point, our expectation is to reopen the doors and that we will need a director, and so I ask people actively, who would you, can you think of any names? Just so that I can have a little rolodex of names there, ready to go. Some of them, I don't know who that person is. That's actually better, right? Because I've already wrapped my brain for all the people I know who I think would be good candidates for a position, right? It's, I don't have a power, I don't, all I have the power to do is to say, I think you would be great for this, I would love it if you would apply. That's all I can do.
Oh, yes.
And, but then the other thing that, that someone suggested to me, and you touched on this a little bit, is, is gee, are there any past, not only directors but commissioners, you know, are there commissioners that, from, from previous, and we know, because we had one apply for the position? So, so, you know, that's another possible avenue for people who do in fact understand this district, so. That was all, thank you.
So I know, because the questions that I asked Julie, she answered for me, thank you very much, Julie. That the hiring ad cost for the Whidby News Times, basic ad is 20 words, one week print, one week online for $65, and a bargain ad is 20 words, one photo in print and online ad, three weeks print, three weeks online for $125, and then the best value is 40 words, one photo in print and online ad, three weeks print, three weeks online for $199. So...
Mr. Chair, so number one, Commissioner Holly and I took on the action item to review much of this for the August meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
So number one, so because our intention was to update, potentially, or propose updating this to something that's a bit more modern, prior to the time that we had hoped or expected to have to hire someone. Number two is, again, at least, according to the way that we did things last time, so this is, I, I understand what this is saying, and I understand the bylaws, but again, when we appointed someone in an interim fashion, we did, we did not, we did not follow this process, because it did not apply.
Okay. So what process did we follow last time?
We said, who here at the pool can, can be the interim director? Erica seems to be the best fit. I'll hail Erica. That was, as I recall, that's about what happened. And it was good, and she was a very, she was the best choice for the time, and she did a good job.
Okay.
With no budget background, so that was interesting to, we all got time to budget.
So this time, we're going outside?
Yes, we have to.
So are there any proposals on how to go outside, since...
I just, I mean, kind of, with what I was hitting on a little bit, with what Wendy was hitting on a little bit, I mean, without dropping too many names and without...
With no budget background, so that was interesting to, we all got time to budget.
So this time we're going outside?
Yes, we, we have to.
So are there any proposals on how to go outside since?
I just, I mean, kind of with what I was hitting on a little bit, with, with what Wendy was hitting on a little bit, I mean, with, with, without dropping too many names and without any responses, yea or nay, um, I, I just, I, I wonder if reaching out to somebody like Geno might be wise. Um, I know he's at a very different point in his life and maybe he wants to give us a leg up, who knows? I mean, there, there's people out there that, that might be worth contacting and asking to, to decide to, hey, let's have one board member call the five or six or 10 people that we think are, are still around that have a working knowledge, et cetera. I mean, it may, may, I mean, we might as well go back a little further, maybe Bill Walker's worth giving a call as well and, I don't know, who knows? Just, just an idea. Um, there was a board member, but I can't remember her name. She's still around. Um, uh, she was on the board with you, sells houses now, I think. She coached, coached soccer and stuff a little bit. I can't remember her name.
Oh.
She was really good with that stuff though as well. We'd have to go back to the.
She was really good in the Red Sox training, that one?
Yes.
Oh, you're talking about TJ.
TJ, TJ Lamont.
That's who you're.
Well, there you go, TJ or, um, so there was TJ, I remember, that was one of the people that applied, um, but there was also Lisa Clark?
Laura. Laura Clark.
Laura Clark. She, she'd be a good one. I mean, anybody we could think of, maybe reach out to them and ask. Laura, Laura Clark.
Yes.
Otherwise, I mean, oh my gosh, to expect somebody to hit the ground running with a little time, it'd be pretty tough.
It sounds like you remember the process of picking somebody when you go through this process of advertising and then going to, that took us, you know, well, it took us forever because we made our selection and he turned us down and we had to, had to go through the whole process again. So maybe for an interim, we're okay, just finding somebody that's willing to take it on for a little bit, as specifically an interim.
Okay, so suggestions on process?
I, I think just specifically as it is an interim, I think any bad blood that there might be between any one person or any group, I think, I think being specifically interim, I would hope that anybody would drop that bad blood and, and you know.
I need, I need a process, right, so. Why I'm willing to do the groundwork, I, and my suggestion is I'm not going to just call one.
Exactly.
Former director, I'd call all former directors and ask, um, if that's what we decide. Um, you know, we, we can get a list of names, um, from former directors or former commissioners.
Well, you said, I mean, you want to say the last five, anybody that's been a director or, um, how, how long ago was Craig? Let's go back that far. I, I don't know. You want to say anybody that was a director or commissioner in the last seven years or? Anybody that was a director in the last seven or commissioner in the last three?
Yes.
I, I'd actually prefer to, um, for, if you want to do it, if you want to process, sorry, I'm, I'm taxed. I need somebody else to step in here too, but I don't, I don't agree with that, I don't agree with the, I, I understand your point, but I don't agree with the, you know, take this circle and call everybody in that circle. I think we should each have, um, the responsibility to, I'll use the word nominate, and what I mean by that is to make suggestions to you of people, so, so that there's personal, I, I'm going to call it, um, that, that, you know what, if I'm going to give you a name, then it's somebody who I think is, could, is willing and able to do that job, um, not just, you know, these people happen to be a whatever, whatever. Um, and, and I'm not, I'm sorry if that sounds insulting, I don't mean it that way.
About a letter of intent.
I'm sorry?
Having to do a letter of intent?
Well, and what I'm, but what I'm saying here is, is that I think we have a responsibility, I think each and every one of us has a responsibility to get you a couple of names, um, and, or, you know, or to do our darndest to try to identify some people and it might not be that I'm, you know, that I know everyone, it might be that I reach out to my network of people. That's, that's the really interesting thing about the five of us, is we wouldn't know each other otherwise. So, I mean, really honestly, we would not know each other and so we each have our own community and circle and, and so I think we owe you each a couple of names of people we think would be good at it and, and certainly if they have, if they have district, um, experience, then, then I think that's great. Um, but I think, I think we need to take this personally and not just say it's this subset of whatever. Then it's done.
Sorry.
Fair enough. I mean, so what, how many days do you want to give us before we give you two names or three names or something?
Well, here's what I'm going to ask. Um, so Julie, can we put this on the Facebook place, page too, that we are looking for a interim?
Can you put out similar to how we put out on our request for commissioners when you get some of the?
And ask them to send me an email?
Okay.
Okay, that way we're, it's, um, and if our next.
Can you send me what you want the wording to be?
I will. I'll send that to you tomorrow. Yes, no.
I kind of like putting it out so that people, people that we suggest at least have some initiative on their own to emailing you or, you know, to take action. And could I, could the, I, I don't know if the foundation could be enter, you know, but they have a lot of people that follow their Facebook, you know, I'm not.
I, I don't know if I'd want to ask them to put that on their Facebook.
Okay.
Because they're separate from the pool.
Okay.
What they choose to do is up to them.
To repost anything they want to.
I would not want it to come from the board. So, that's my suggestion.
Okay, I'm.
I'm one, I'm just one of the boards, so, that's my.
No, I, I'm.
Um, so if we go forward with names on the Facebook and I'll give you something.
Do you want it on the website also?
Yeah, as may, you know, as much as we can get it out there by all means. Um, our next meeting is August 23rd, correct? Yes. Um, one, two, and, and let's go till August the 16th.
What did you just say?
August 16th, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, to get the.
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll, we'll go a deadline to have letters of interest, resumes or, you know, curriculum vitae and to email me with a letter of interest or something by August the 16th and I'll have the verbiage to you, Julie, as soon as possible.
Perfect.
Okay? Unless there's a better suggestion or objection to that from the board?
No.
No? All right, we'll go with that and then between now and then, I'll go ahead and act as the go-between between, uh, the board and the two employees unless there's an objection for that.
No.
Okay, and, um, we'll re-address that at a different, pardon here. All right. Further comments, questions or concerns about the director's vacancy from the board? Thank you. Moving on to the next point of business, ballot resolution. Uh, you have printed in front of you the ballot resolution 18 dash 03, which is the verbiage for the levy ballot. The writing was approved with the exception of how much we wanted to put in for the levy for, so I will now open that up for discussion.
20 cents.
Commissioner Hofmeyer?
I mean, I, I think moving, I think advancing it to probably 20 cents would make sense, um, 20 cents per thousand. Some of the thinking is there, um, what, seven years ago when this MNO levy was passed, um, I would have to go back to quote it exactly, but minimum wage was probably closer to nine bucks or something and, you know, if, if this MNO passes, by the time it expires, minimum wage will be closer to 1,350 and I think that's, that's rather indicative of, of how much cost across the board have increased on a lot of things and I think 17 cents per thousand doesn't cut it. Um, I know some people might have a taste for more, but boy, I, I think we want to be conservative there probably. It, it would be nice to, to figure out, hey, 20 cents per thousand gets us, gets us a water slide and it helps us add this program or that program to, so the district can become a little more, uh, self-sustaining as well. Um, that's my thought. I, I'd like to see it around 20 cents, probably not over.
Commissioner Shingelton?
So I just handed out, um, and I apologize that, so the, the first sheet you guys got in your email, I think it was today, um, the other one I just did today, so I, my, my greatest apologies for not having things in a more timely fashion, I'm just trying to think through. And so the first one just talks about the difference between 17 and 20 cents. Um, and, and by the way, and I know I put this in my email, but from 2000, um, 2005 to 2012, I think it was, were those, or 2006 to 2012, um, 2006 to 2011, um, the levy was actually 18 cents. Um, and then the levy dropped to 17 cents and while I'm sure somewhere someone has a justification why, of why that was a healthy thing to do, um, I think we can clearly say that it was not. Um, that, that it was, I, I think we can see some of, um, while it wasn't, hasn't been the district's only problem, um, it, it, I think it has certainly been a contributor and for some of us who were not on the board prior to that, we, I didn't, we didn't know that. Um, and so anyway, so, so what I tried to do is outline my, if, if we had 20 cents, here's how I believe we would spend it. Now, I, I think the, the impetus for us wherever we land is, is to agree upon what our value proposition to, um, our customers is. And so whether you think it's the things on this list or not, um, again, these are all, and I should have draft written all over this because I'm the one who, who hates other things getting out there as fact when they're really just, this is an opinion. Um, but, um, you know, I think we can, there are, there are so many additional things we can offer by asking just a little bit more. Um, and, and then the second page, so hopefully you've all seen this first page, um, the second page, what I did was I tried to just go through, and this is a really high level budget of, uh, the very first, the, the first section is, is a high level plan of what 20, 20 cents at six years would look like, um, just general spending and, and making the assumption so that first, as is operations, is a base, is based on the baseline of 2017, how much we spent to have the operations that we're all used to, let's call it that, um, less of, of, some coach. Um, and then, and then tried to look at where our, our additional money would go for things like facility maintenance and, and, um, uh, facility and equipment upgrades as well as building our reserves. Um, so I tried to break that down and so there is a high level plan for 20 cents at, I, I'm sorry, I know I'm talking a lot and I know it's all mean to you, I apologize, but, but a high level plan for 20 cents at five years, a high level plan for 20 cents at four years because, you know, we could, we could do it for a shorter period of time. Um, I mean, that is also an option, um, for the high level plan for 17 cents at six years, um, and, and kind of what that means to us. And so I know it's a lot to take in, um, and I don't know how other people feel, so I will give you an opportunity to talk, but, but for me, this, I, I really needed to understand how the numbers would look, um, to help me make a decision. So for me, I, I needed it and I wanted to share it with everyone else.
Thank you. Commissioner Harden?
Well, these numbers that you have are these, these are thousands.
Correct, they're, they're, um, hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds, so five hundred?
Or, or 20,000. Right, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that was, I, I do think we need to raise the levy and 20 cents sounds like a very, a reasonable amount because now I feel like our equipment is old and over the last few years there have been, you know, I have to wait a month for a heart because our equipment was old. And I think that with a higher levy amount, we need to set part of that aside, you know, and, and you have it, you have money set aside for maintenance so that gradually we can get the roof fixed, get, you know, get things that are big money expenses that there is no money for at 17, I, I don't think there's any money for at 17, continuing at 17 cents.
Commissioner Hof?
I was prepared to say, oh God, it's got to stay at 17. Thank you. This makes all the difference. It's like, this we can sell to the voters, this makes sense, it says, we're going to improve and I'm ecstatic because we're going to put more money in the reserves, maintenance is going to be sufficiently funded. Thank you. So putting all these together, it makes sense, it absolutely makes sense, it's a great plan and I, I changed my mind.
So, um, I'd like to say a couple of things. Number one, I appreciate Commissioner Shingleton's work and dedication on this last week, I know how much she put into it, so thank you. Um, two, I think there's some good points brought up. Commissioner Hofmeyer mentioned the increases in, uh, minimum wage. We also had the new law with sick leave and, uh, we need to take that into account. Uh, we saw the increases to utilities with gas electric and, uh, as we all looked at tonight, the wonderful charge of, uh, a thousand dollars a month just to have water hooked up and those are not going to go down, especially since we live in a city that, um, as a city councilwoman likes to say, everybody wants to flush their toilets and she's absolutely right, we do want to, we do want to have that ability in the city. Um, she, she's correct. Um, but that does not come free of charge. So, uh, we know our, our prices are going to increase. Commissioner Hofmeyer mentioned, uh, that the last time we passed the levy was quite a while ago.
Seven years ago.
Yeah, at seven, at 17 cents and a lot's changed. Um, the other thing we need to take into account is the fact that our reserves has dwindled as we haven't had a levy this last year and it's going to continue to go that way as we know we're trying to keep ourselves solvent. So we will need to build our reserves back up as we open up for those unforeseen costs that happen when we, when we have the taxpayers back into their facility and I think that's important. And as we bring them back into their facility, no matter what user group they are, we not just bring them into the same old facility, but we have a plan to go forward and make the facility better and offer them more. And I appreciate the fact that a division that Commissioner Shingleton had with putting in here some of the things that we are, can do as we go forward, um, whether it's a simple fact of warming the pool up a degree, um, bringing it up to where we say we're supposed to keep it, uh, the better locker room facilities which are in need of repair and whether it's a new coat of paint or not, the sliding inflatables just like they do at Fidalgo, um, a new UV system which we haven't had for years, which will help the rest of our equipment stay functional. These are all very valuable things. Um, so I, I appreciate the work and effort that everybody's put into this, especially you, Commissioner Shingleton, and the vision that we have to go forward. Um, we have a resolution on the table, it'll be some resolution 18 dash 03. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we amend motion, or resolution 18 dash 03, um, to a levy amount of 20 cents or less per thousand. Second?
All in favor?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion, please.
Yes, discussion, thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I realize, sorry, I, hey, I wrote something and I forgot it because I got it, got ahead of myself and I won't read it anyway. So, so please, please, I, I took the time, please. Um, so as, as much as we know, our commi, our community misses the pool. We also know we had updates needed and limitations to our programs and services. We have an inventive staff, we have had an inventive staff who stretched dollars as far as they could to provide as much as possible. Although I'm not sure why the levy rate was reduced from 2012 to 2017, that and organizational challenges have taken their toll on the district. We need to ask a little bit more to not only restore our facility and its programs, but to grow and extend to meet our community's needs and wants. To ask 20 cents per thousand means a contribution of $5 per month for a homeowner of a $300,000 home. That's 75 cents more than we received in 2012 to 17, but with just that amount, we can do so much more for our community. We will be able to modernize our aging facility by making necessary updates, by increasing energy efficiency and by replacing and purchasing new equipment for the whole community to use. Let me paint a vision about what this district can very easily be. An updated facility lighter and brighter than it currently looks, a pool with inflatables for added value in open swim, family nights and parties, a patio used for classes, after, after school activities or even as a meeting place, a baseball field modernized for play at all levels with lighting for night activities and power for extended usage, a dog park with additional facilities and attractions, partnerships with local schools, businesses and organizations to offer non-aquatic programming like martial arts, yoga, spin classes, meditation, gymnastics, dance, art, astronomy, gardening and language classes, concerts in the park and food truck roundups during the summer, guided trail hikes in the local area, trip offerings for excursions to, to area cities, mountains and events in Bellingham, Seattle, Olympia, Leavenworth and beyond, a paddling festival or a record-breaking weekend.
Seattle, Olympia, Leavenworth and beyond, a paddling festival or a record-breaking weekend where we as, we can, we as a community take on a Guinness World Record annually. So a district that offers something for everyone and improves the quality of life we have here.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm done.
Further discussion? So all in favor of passing Resolution, you said amending?
Right, well, we, we do need to amend it because...
That's correct.
Yes.
So all in favor of passing Resolution eighteen oh three at twenty cents an hour, or twenty cents less per thousand?
Why does it say or less?
Because that's the way it's supposed to be written.
That's the way it has to be.
Yes, ma'am. That's a good question.
I think it's one of those things that, um, there's one of those things where that you're only allowed to task people at this level and so sometimes it will be less.
Because if, because we're a junior taxing district and, and therefore sometimes if other things take precedence, you will actually see.
If, if they've already reached this, whatever the level is threshold, we don't move down because we're, we're in category E, which is bottom areas, or ED, whatever.
We get after everybody else, correct?
Okay. Can I, um...
Yes.
The off-leash dog park, off, does that have to be capitalized? And then baseball fields also should not be capitalized?
I wrote it the same way the last resolution was written.
Then never mind.
So...
Okay.
We can make those changes.
I don't know, don't want to piss off the prosecutor's office.
Can we go give them something to change so they won't change anything?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Julie, can you do me a favor and go make this, make the twenty cents change? And...
And two points.
And then eighteen...
Eighteen at zero three.
And do you want me to change the capitalization?
No, ma'am, please do not.
Okay, so twenty cents?
It's right here. Twenty cents here and here and then that one. Thank you very much. Employee handbook, Commissioner Damasue, Holly.
Uh, I haven't done anything with it because I thought I had to.
You do.
Okay.
It will be tabled till August. No, you're fine.
Right.
Um, reopening budget, Commissioner Harden.
Well, for the special need, you know, some of the reopening budget, and we have this piece of paper, these are estimated costs. I don't think that you could say that they're, because, because at this point, we're kind of on educated guesswork because we don't know all of the numbers. But we, before we can reopen, we have to hire staff and do training. And I put down $6,000 for that. If we, it sounds like advertising would be a lot less than that from what we're talking I don't know, background checks are not overly expensive. And I don't know where the training, you know, what, what that is going to cost. So that's a fluid, you know, number. We will have to check out all the pool equipment because it has been off for so long. And I think that it's pretty definite, we need a new pool, because that would circulate from.
It's on its way out.
Yeah, it's on its way out. So, and that would cost about, is that $5,000 for that? So, the rest of this stuff we don't know. You know, it, it was working, everything was working pretty well.
No, it started to go down.
No, the pump, that I mean, but everything else. So...
I expect we're going to start and continue to do it.
Yeah, we have to start everything up at probably at least two or three weeks before we have any hope of opening because just to make sure that, you know, before we advertise we're opening, well, first we have to get money. And then, you know, before we advertise we're opening, we need to have everything running, I would say, for at least a week or two, you know, to, to see that it does run properly. And then...
Commissioner Hart?
Oh, yes.
May I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
Matt, how long do you think it would take to pull back up the temperature?
Oh, you're looking, I would dare say from this degree, you're looking at probably two weeks.
Two weeks to get the pool, we're about what, sixty right now or are we below sixty?
Uh, we're at sixty-two.
Sixty-two? So to get from sixty-two back up to seventy-nine, eighty, it's going to take us at least two weeks?
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to what you want to put it at eighty-two, then yeah, it's going to be about two weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hart, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay. And then, you know, from what we've been talking about the salaries, for, this is a six-month plan. And I think that at the point that we're talking now, we're probably going to be less than that. If we can get a director for a moderate amount of, you know, part-time director at, I, I mean, if we're going to pay somebody to be the director, then, you know, this is an unknown number to me. Maybe it's known to other people. But what, so I put a hundred and ten thousand. And I think we could, we could probably trim that back. It, it sounds like we're trying to trim expenses back and we're trying to get a, you know, not a full-time director, but fifteen hours or so. So we can probably trim that back. And then there's the payroll expenses, I have down here fifteen thousand to be paid. That, that's really, what that really is, is the payroll taxes, like social security and, that's pretty much what it is, right?
Social security, LNI, federal holding.
Mm-hmm, right. The utilities, seventy, I, I put it seventy-eight thousand, that's, you know, it all depends. Are we going to keep the pool at eighty-two? We're going to keep it at eighty? You know, if that makes a difference. We need, if we're going to open, I think, we decided, I think, that we're going to accept credit cards. That means we have to, you know, pay the credit card fees and we have legal expenses that we need to take care of before being opened. So, that's, you know, all of these numbers, at, you know, at this point, I think, I think the, the closer we get, the more we say, okay, this is what we're going to pay the director, or this is what it really, what we're really going to have. We have the pool chemicals, we have insurance, that's the number, three thousand, and if we open up, that's probably what we're going to have to have for six months. That's for six months. It's, it's more for, wouldn't you say that six months would be about that? We have...
Well, technically, sorry, if we're, if that was a question, technically our insurance is paid through the end of the year or November, December. Right, so, so we know that we will have a premium due at the end of the year and that's part of our insolvency, our, our insolvency problem is, is paying that unless we determine a different method. So, so in reality, well, it, it is, but, but I, I think, I think it's, I mean, yeah, I, I think at some point, I, I think we have to recognize and that this is static relative to, we're not at zero, right? So if we're going to add in things that we, that are part of our cash flow statement, we're going to add those things in, we have to understand that there's a differential, right?
Right. This does not count any, it, it doesn't count the money that we're going to take in, you know, the user money. So, that's going to be, you know, it will mitigate some of these expenses, but, you know, to start with, we have to know that we can pay because I, you know, user money might be, might start out low because we've been closed for so long. And then there's the cool chemicals, there's maintenance, cleaning and sanitation, which right now is, uh, you know, I think we can get some volunteers to help us clean this place up. But for me, before we open the pool, we, we have to do some, some cleaning, you know, because I know for my house, before I have people come, I like to make sure that everything looks clean and welcoming. So, you know, some of these, some of these expenses, we can mitigate by volunteer hours, but I don't think that we can completely rely on volunteers. And then for the last statement, I said, well, okay, this comes to twenty, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, which is a lot more than what we were originally talking about. We were originally talking about opening the pool, you know, we had our big signs for two hundred thousand. But I think they weren't in, you know, we didn't, when we did that, I don't think we were thinking about the new pumps and the, um, cost of hiring people. You know, we could, we could probably get by if we had two hundred thousand to get, you know, because I think if we have enough money to open and carry us through the end of the year, we can find other sources, you know, once you have the ball rolling, I think it could roll a more. But we still have a big amount of money that we need to get to open the doors.
So first off, I want to say thank you to Commissioner Harden and all those that worked with her to put this together, I appreciate that. I know there were many hours actually spent going over two thousand seventeen budgets and what we have left in two thousand eighteen. Um, currently we have about a hundred and nine thousand left in all of our funds, if that serves correctly, is about right, Julie? So, um, we have a hundred and nine thousand left.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Currently or as of the end of last month?
At the end of, at the end of June, yes.
It matters.
No, it does matter, thank you. Um, and we still have July's bills to pay out of that. So, knowing that, um, and that this plan only go, this budget only goes until December? Was it designed only to go till the end of this year or was it six months?
Well, it was a six month, six months.
Okay. And so that'll take us August, September, October, November, December, January. Even if we pass the levy, which we will...
Right, right.
We won't see our first big check from the levy until April.
Right.
Which still leaves us February, March and some of April before we get that money.
Right.
So knowing that, um, as you said, there, there is very, there's a lot of support and as you said, once you get the ball rolling, it will roll more. Um, I also think there's other things to look at in this, as you mentioned. Um, there are programs that can use our facility after we open it without lifeguards. The high school swim team would be one.
Right.
Uh, the Blue Heron, the private club would be another because both of those are by USA Swimming, bring their own lifeguards with them. Uh, we had the scuba folks in here tonight, I'm sure they wouldn't even mind even with their dry and wet suits on and being a little warmer. Um, and if we warmed the pool back up, um, we'd have to have a lifeguard, I think, for Skagit Valley College, I don't believe it, yes, they do need a lifeguard.
Well, they don't for, for the Navy?
Because Pete's a lifeguard. So, uh, is Pete coming back this year?
He said he wasn't, but I think he is.
Okay. So there, there may or may not be programs out there that could use the pool, which gives us wiggle room.
Yes, yes. And I, I have heard that there, we can get a contract from the Navy, which, I mean, I don't know that it's, I certainly don't have any authority on that, I'm not...
Well, we have, we do have an active contract with the Navy, we're just not able to provide services for them.
Right.
Right.
And for the Navy, we would have to provide lifeguards. So that would, that would, that would incur some hiring costs, training costs, background checks and then the personnel costs.
I mean, but if, but if we do get reopened, their contracts would not exceed sixty, sixty-five, is that what theirs was?
Sixty-two.
Not that it's, I mean, so it, so it brings this two seventy-nine down sixty-two thousand theoretically, right?
If they exercise the entire...
When I get divided, okay.
And that's based on usage, they pay so much per user, so unless a different type of contract were negotiated with them, it would be dependent upon how many visitors we have.
And there are, there are ways to use that contract and to gain from that contract. Whether we did a military-only weekend, where military and their family came and used the pool for a weekend, um, we could bump that usage up to make the most of it and very quickly. So there are ways to use that, to garner that income.
Well, that's what I was thinking and I remembered us talking about some of that and, and I think we had a bigger number and then we subtracted less from that of what we thought we would have in the bank, what we would get from the school, what we would get from the Navy. I, I still think our two hundred for, I, I think our shot in the dark, throwing a dart behind our back, if you like, I, I still think the two hundred thousand for six months is about spot on when you figure in other factors, other factors like that.
Right, and I did not figure in any income on this. So, you're right, there's, I think there's other people, other organizations, possibly the, yeah, I, I don't even want to mention names because I think if they don't, then it could be embarrassing for them. But I think there are certainly other contacts that Julie, our foundation, Julie, has, has made and that might, you know, if we get a real pared-down budget that we can show and we can present that to some of these people, then I, I, I mean, I think that the money to open is, is certainly in the realm of possibility. But, you know, we can't, as a responsible money person, we can't open, you know, we can't, I don't think we can open on possibilities. We have to have, you know, in writing what people will do and they want, in turn, they want in writing from what we're going to do, so...
Do you remember from years past when the, when the girls' swim meet would typically start?
They start in mid, they start practice in mid-August, same time, yeah.
It's the twentieth.
Is that the Monday?
Twentieth.
Yes.
Twenty, twenty-second.
Twentieth, yeah. So the, they would start practice on the twentieth, two weeks before school starts, they'd start practice on the twentieth. That's when the football team, the soccer team and...
Football starts earlier.
So, um, the twentieth is when the girls' swimming is allowed to start.
I mean, I know, when, when the pool was first closing, I know that the school had asked, hey, what are the hard costs? And, you know, they wondered if they could have paid the heat, the water to the level that they needed and paid for their own insurance, et cetera. Has, has that, that conversation happened yet?
So, um, the conversation that we had is bleeding over in other business, but it is appropriate, um, is that you turn the switch on for the pool, you can't break the cost down. Um, it's, it's like, uh, the, the example I used, you go in the bathroom, you turn the light on to use the facilities, you walk out, you turn the light off, you stop using the electricity, unfortunately the pool doesn't work the same way. We walk out after we use the facilities, we've, I've got to keep the light switch on. So there's no way to delineate that cost per program.
And we know that, we know that seventy-two degrees would be less than eighty-two, but it's not a pool by how much, right?
That's correct. Utilities are our biggest expense. Um, when you look at running the pool and two thousand seventeen budget, our lightest month in two thousand seventeen, I think, was forty-one thousand dollars, all right, for the whole, whole month. That was with a different budget, that was forty-one thousand dollars. That was with a different budget. That was forty-one thousand dollars for a month. So, knowing that, and going on the assumption in the 2017 budget, without taking anything out for July, that only gives us about two and a half months left. The argument there is, do we want to stay open for limited use for two and a half months? Maybe even extended use? Or do we want to keep the district solvent through the levy? The arguments there are, people will come forward. You know, there are groups in town that will come forward with money, and donations, and ways to help us keep solvent. And then the question there, therein lies, you know, do we move forward with that promise? Or do we operate on what we have with a dead pool? That's, that is a tough question that we face. So, comments from the commissioners.
You know, I think, if we're to assume positively that the levy is going to pass, there happens to be a lot of money to expend quickly that could go, I mean, that could purchase things that could last us twenty, thirty years. I mean, so that's, that's the tough thing. But, I mean, if it's other groups wanting to pay for the money, I mean, it's, they can spend the money how they choose, I guess, as well, right? I mean, so, we know what it costs. If somebody came to us and said, hey, I want to pay for that, then I guess that's their right, but it's, it's a tough choice, that's for sure.
I think that if we open, then we have motion. We have something happening. And we can generate publicity off of that. I, I mean, I don't, I don't think that we should open without a promise of more help. I mean, as, I want to open, you know, I want to be here. I want to be in the water. But I, you know, I think that we need to do everything we can to make ourselves appealing to people that have significant amounts of money to offer us.
Commissioner Holling, any thoughts?
I want the pool to reopen, but without, you know, money guaranteed, I don't see how we can. We, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers of the district, all the taxpayers, not just people who want to swim. And we have to protect this facility because if we run out of money in October, it's like, we can't, we can't even pay for the levy. I mean, I know they'll just, they'll put it in there and expect that we will pay for it. Then what do we do? What, we're going to get sued? I don't know. But I have a...
We have to pass the levy.
I have a hard time with, you know, knowing we're going to, we're opening the pool and going bigger, not going in depth, but we're going to suspend ourselves down way too fast, and...
Well, if you'll go back, what, if you'll go back a little over a year ago, I think the director at the time, because money was that tight then, I think the director at the time had went to the bank and asked if we could get a loan, and they're like, no. So, we definitely can't get one now, right?
Well, you passed the levy.
Oh, my gosh. Exactly. Well, it was, it was still tough. You could if you were, if you were going to buy something that they felt they had collateral against. But they still weren't willing to just write a check. If it was a water slide, they're like, yeah, maybe.
It was a line of credit, just to be clear.
Yeah. Just a line of credit. They're like, oop. Yeah, I mean, with where we're at right now, we just got to figure out a way, got to figure out a way to pay for the ballot measure even, I mean...
Maybe if we figure out a way to get through that sixth of November.
Exactly.
And I'll gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today.
I mean, so I guess all I was saying there is, it's not even like we can, it's not even like we can chance over running. It's not like we can put it on a card or something.
Well, how much did we pay this much to, again, it was four-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-seven. That was for June.
Yeah, you said forty-one thousand.
Forty-one thousand.
Really?
Four-thousand-one-hundred, right.
Well, he meant, he said last year's expenses, the lightest, the lightest month.
Two-thousand-seven.
So, he's saying operational.
Oh, I thought you said forty-one.
Fully operational.
He did. And that is the correct number. Yeah. So, so...
For one month, for every month?
No, for one month.
Oh.
The most expensive month in 2017, when we were fully operational, was in the ninety thousands.
Oh, my God. So, oh, that was the lightest month. You said that.
Yes, it was the lightest month, but that was fully operational with all expenses.
That wasn't fully...
So, that was fully, that was fully operational with all expenses.
Oh, not just the utility?
So, no. That was everything. So...
That was so much water, and it was like...
No, 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 no.
Okay.
That was in 2017's budget.
Okay.
So, and the most expensive month in 2017 was in the nineties. All right? But then, you look at all the additional expenses we had. We were fully operational with a larger staff, and we actually had income then, too, to offset that. So, if we had forty-one hundred for this last month, and then we have to pay for July, and...
We just assume ten K a month at our current rates. Our current burn rate's currently, it's under ten K. I mean, and not just the things variation, so just assume ten K is the burn rate.
Ten K is the burn rate per month.
I would.
So, we're down to less than ninety thousand before we...
Well, that's, that's, well, but that's without insurance and settlement, right? Those are the two things that we need to compensate, you know?
And the insurance is forty-five thousand?
Uh, closed, it's forty-eight. Open, you know, with, with, uh, greater than whatever, whatever, it's sixty-eight. So, when we open the doors, we would not necessarily need to pay the differential. But if we earned at a certain, at a rate over a hundred, I think it's a hundred-and-twenty-five K, is that, it was something like that. It's a six-figure number.
It goes up.
Yeah, once we got to revenue numbers over that, we would need to, we would need to pay the next level of the policy.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
I mean, the, the six-month number seems way too big to me, but I do wonder, I don't know. I do wonder if it's been in mid-September or something that might be wise. I don't know. It's just a thought. I wonder if it might be wiser to, instead of two months, maybe to try to figure out a way to afford two and a half, or instead of six months, to afford two and a half months. Just a thought, I guess. And it would, again, depend on if people wanted to help out or not, I guess.
So, if we opened it in September, we would lose one of the, one of the potential sources of revenue, I hate to say that, but we couldn't welcome the girls' high school swimming back.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I haven't really, other than...
No, yes, you were doing the...
Well, yeah, and that's, because that's what, I mean, that's what speaks to me. I mean, I know that there's, you know, a lot more to it than that, but they have to, they have to work. I, I think part of this is, I feel like, I feel like every time we talk about some of this, we're trying to find the solution. And I think we have to recognize that we just need to keep moving forward to find a solution. Because the fact of the matter is, is we all expect to reopen this pool. We absolutely respect, expect that. And I hope everyone in this room fully expects us to reopen this pool.
And they're expected to close.
Well, thanks, bud. But we're trying to focus on, so in terms of, we need a plan for reopening, regardless of what we do. And that plan is, is, will change slightly, but we still need a plan. And so, part of it is, I think we need to start taking what we have and refining it and understanding, what do we think the lead times are? And I know, you know, there are some things that are behind, you know, things that I even took in as action items. But, but I'd like to see, and we did talk about this yesterday offline. I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to ask, for example, if, you know, and if everyone agrees, I'd like to ask Julie to, you know, can you help put us together? If we, if we opened on a part-time basis, what would that schedule look like? Because I think we think, regardless of when we open, it's probably going to be part-time. And so, what does that look like, and if that inputs to our plan? You are the community outreach lady because you're super passionate about that. Can you start working on that part of it? Because again, whether it happened a week from now or six months from now, we're going to have to do the same thing. We might just end up making it, if we found a way, right? If we, if those solutions came through and we found a way to do it faster, there might be some things where we could say, okay, we can take this out, we can take this out. We still need the pool plan. We really do. Because we need to have an expectation, because that's the other thing, is that's our commitment to the taxpayers that we're asking to vote yes. And, and if it gets to that far, if it gets to that long, this is our commitment of what we're going to do, basically, as soon as we know that we're funded. If we have an opportunity to do something before that, then fantastic for all, for everyone. But either way, the steps are the same. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. So, I'm still working on, I'm still working, absolutely. Because the thing is, is, you know, so I'm still working on those pieces. And here's, I was trying to think about this today, because there's been a lot of other things that have come up. And, you know, meaning all relative to this, you know, the district. But what I'd really like to do, because part of it is, this is really a hard place to have a discussion with the five of us. And so, what I'd really like to do is, is maybe take the approach of, if you and I could meet, because I know you were looking at some cash flow stuff, and I was as well. I'd really like us to put our heads together on that. I'm more than willing to meet separately and individually to help compile the pieces of the plan and get feedback. Again, respecting OPMA, respecting, you know, all of those things, but to try to get feedback on a one-on-one basis to, I think that's going to help us move forward with a plan. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Can we, uh... Well, yes, I, thank you. My question is, can we, can we do that and have a workshop or a special meeting? I prefer a workshop, because I mean, can, I prefer a special meeting. We'll figure it out. To be determined whether it's a workshop or a special meeting, I have got to review the OPMA to make sure that...
What do you want the five of us?
To meet again on August the ninth.
You do one right after the other?
Okay.
So, it's made in the fall of the workshop?
That's a Thursday?
A special meeting to follow the workshop. That may be the answer. Yes, that's, August, August the ninth is a Thursday.
Do you want evening, eighteen-thirty?
Eighteen-thirty, yes, ma'am. Can we do this before then?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, let's do this with the date to have a workshop with a special meeting. That way, we can get input from the public also on August the ninth.
To discuss opening the pool, is that what the topic was?
Yeah. To have a solid plan, to look at final budget numbers, to start to move forward, to decide whether or not we can actually move forward. The workshop, workshop would be the open to the public part. The special meeting, if we decide to make a motion, the special meeting would not have...
Well, no, no, no. Special meetings are open to the public.
Right. Yes, yes. But we would have no public comment at the special meeting. Right. So, I want to have the workshop so there can be that open dialogue with the public beforehand. So, we'll review that. I think that suggestion's probably great because we cover all bases with the workshop, followed by a special meeting. We can get everybody's input. And we'll put that out on the website. Julie, you and I work on that tomorrow.
Okay. We'll discuss specifics afterwards.
Yes, can do.
At the workshop, everybody will get up, like, pin the post-it on the board or whatever.
That, could I post?
Yes, eighteen, yeah, eighteen-thirty on the ninth. That would be great.
Or six-thirty to, yeah.
Six-thirty, yes, I'm so sorry.
I said it to you first on that one.
Further discussion on the reopening budget. Commissioner Harden?
No.
Thank you. New business report on meeting with community partners. As the foundation mentioned, we had a meeting, Commissioner Singleton and I did, with community partners. There was a lot of emphasis, obviously, from different partners for different, uh, different reasons, for different actions. And I think, you know, the school district's very interested in opening in time for the girls' high school swim team. Dr. Gibbon is very passionate about making sure that all the sports are equally represented at the high school. And so, for Dr. Gibbon, it was very important. And he also feels a strong sense of community and how important our whole entire district, not just the pool, but the entire district is to the community. The chamber and had some great comments about levy. Christine Cribb and a couple of city council members had worked on past levies. They passed on some wonderful information to us for that, to our levy committee, which was very, very gracious, we were very gracious for them for doing that. There were a couple of community leaders there that were interested in where we stood, if we, you know, to find out where we stood, what our plan was going forward, and that we actually had a plan. We answered a lot of their questions. They gave us some suggestions and for moving forward, and their opinions on what we should do moving forward. The Navy, we talked about their, and the Navy MWR program was there, their director. He mentioned exactly what we talked about, their contract and what it's based on. And it's based on usage. And, you know, it's based on usage for the military member. And then afterwards, if there's money left over for the dependents, and if there's money left over from that for the retirees. And that is based on usage. It's set. It's not going to go up. It's not going to go down. They're set for this year, which we know, if their fiscal year ends September, it starts again in October. So, he kind of filled us in on that. Am I forgetting much? The Rotary was there with some of, the Rotary listened. It was very encouraging about what they heard, but wanted more, and wanted some definitive action on us before going forward. And I think what we're doing on the ninth will give them that definitive action, and will actually give them a voice, hopefully, in the room. We'll reach out to all those community partners and let them know what we're doing and what we're going to do on the ninth, and invite them all to be there. And they'll have a, have a voice to come in. We also had some folks come up to us afterwards and offer volunteer services, which was, yeah, on their own time, outside of their official capacity, which was very gracious of many of them. So, it was a productive meeting. I'd like to thank the foundation again for their part, and Dr. Gibbon and his part for setting up the meeting, getting community members together. And that's all I have. Any questions on the meeting with the community partners?
Can I just, do you think?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the, so, so there were a couple of things that, that, so, you know, I think, I actually think Chairman Merrill already said this, but, but, you know, they're really looking to, their approach is as soon as possible. Like, that's what they want to, that's really what they want to see. And, and so, I think by continuing to develop the plan, we'll be able to get to a, what is that, what would that mean? Is that, is that really a possibility? You know, we were clear about the fact that our insolvency problem was something that we had to, you know, we had to start there. And we know that part of that is, has been rectified a bit. There's, you know, there's, and there are more things that we can, that we can do as well to address that. But the other question that really isn't something that we have talked about, but that we need to have an answer to, and, and I've been thinking about, and I think, I think you have too, is what is it going to take for us to open? And it was more of, and probably everyone at this table understands my love for a metaphor. So, instead of our current strategy, and this is something we have not, this is what was really presented to us. We did not agree to anything. We listened, we heard, and we understood the questions that we needed to answer. But it was kind of an, instead of, for scuba diving, instead of having a full tank, which is what we're looking for, and that's the approach that we have been taking. Really, their approach was a little more buddy breathing. What does it take to, how much, how much air do you need to submerge yourself? And then, and then looking for, and I know, I know that's part of what you were talking about as well. But, but then, what would you need to sustain yourself? And so, it's a different approach, which is part of why, obviously, we're not further along because it's a different way, it's a different way of thinking. And so, we kind of need to move forward, I think, with both things in mind to see, is there, is there really a viable, and I think I've heard that from everybody here, so I'm kind of repeating it, but that's, you know, that's really their question to us, is what does it take to open the doors? And then what do you need to sustain yourself? And, and those weren't things we could specifically answer, but we need to. And, you know, we, again, we need to, not only, you know, for those folks, but, but in our, as part of our planning purposes. So, that's all I had to add. And by the way, and everybody supports us. So, it was really positive, and I felt more warmth and support than I have ever felt in the past four years. True story. True story. So, I mean, it's, they're, they're absolutely there for us, but they have, they have great questions that we need to answer.
And they all, yeah. And they all, yeah. So as we go forward to the August 9th, that's a thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Shingleton, to not only look at the holistic approach towards everything, but look at, as we look at the budgets, 2018 and what we have left and 2017, really go into that budget and what is the bare minimum we need to open the door?
Yes.
And then what's the bare minimum to go forward from there? That's what we, we need to look at, both that approach, a phased approach, and a wide-open approach. We can't just be narrow-minded in how we look at opening the doors, and I believe that's what you were trying to say, ma'am, is that's, that's, that was really stressed by the community partners, is don't just look at the, you know, holistic, what does it cost to get operations up, but what does it cost to take just the bare minimum to open the door? And then those users, you know, we can, we can put those users in. I would say for your schedules, Julie, I would have a couple of different schedules. And I would say for those schedules, I would do just the minimum, open the doors, you look at things like the Blue Heron and the high school swim team as self-sufficience, and maybe add, reach out and call Pete in Skidmore Valley College and see if they're able to do it, and that's another self-sufficient, because we don't have to have additional staff. So with those people using the pool, those are our community members, they're all our taxpayers, even if we just open the doors for them, that's a win, you know? We'll miss long course season for the Blue Heron, the private group, but we'll get them in the water for the start of the shorter course season. We'll get the high school girls in for their season period. And then, you know, put in a military block time, because if nothing else, the PRTs, we can get in here, and I believe Wayne did say he could bring a lifeguard for the PRTs. And so, because they have the certified lifeguards and that is required, so they bring their own lifeguard for the PRTs, so we could put that in there and then build from that, and build from that to other programs, and so...
Three different.
Okay, thank you. And then for those of us on the board, excuse me, excuse me, thanks. And then for those of us on the board, please look at that as we review the budgets, please look at that as you review numbers on essentials. What are the essentials we need and what, what capacity do we want to open the pool at if we decide to go that way? Once again, Commissioner Harden, thank you so much for you and everybody that assisted you on this, I appreciate the time that you put into this, because I know it was a no small amount of time.
Yes, but I would like to...
Yes, ma'am.
...comment on, I personally would have a problem with just opening the pool to the people that don't need lifeguards, because that's what they did when the levy failed, was just kept it open for those same people.
They had a contract with me.
Well, you had a contract with me too, because I had a season pass, but it wasn't on, you know, and I accepted, I, I accept that, but I have a hard time thinking about opening the pool without having some time for, you know, ordinary people like me.
For the general public, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, yeah. Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
I don't know which one of us beat each other with our hands, but I just wanted to say, I mean, one of us has segued off the other, we read each other's mind maybe. When the pool was just open for the high school, if I went to the baseball field, if I went to the grocery store, Walmart, it didn't matter where I went, I, I got to sit and get out of it by our constituents, and they were very upset about it, and trying to explain to them that we had a legally binding contract with the high school and we're just essentially trying to not get sued, et cetera, was a non-viable answer. And that close to a levy, I do not think it would be very wise, and that's that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet, of course.
I think we always make more money with open swim anyway. And like, a day like today, oh my God, we could fill the pool.
Right.
Commissioner Shingleton?
Right. For one, is that enough? I don't know.
So maybe just tentatively, the, the second two budgets might be the ones that got looked at, I guess.
Homework has some different options.
Thank you. And then I appreciate everybody's effort and also coming back on the 9th and the 16th for their homework. Payroll review, the next thing on new business. So we're going to do an executive session, we had a, actually, the Webby News Times reached out to us and said, hey, shout-out, probably not a good idea. And so even though I'd asked somebody else, they said it was okay, I went back and asked MRC, and MRC, thank you again for your contribution to the North Webby Pool Park and Recreation District, and they said, yeah, you're kind of, you're kind of skirting a line there. You may be, but you may not be their suggestion to us because of the, the, what do they call it, what'd she call it? The intent or the letter of the law that is better to hear on the side of putting it out there than it is to put it behind the closed doors, and, like, that works for me. So we're going to talk about it out here and open, and that's a payroll review. What we realized last month is that our auditing, we have down to two employees, there is no director, and there's, we lack of checks and balances, and we, the three of us talked about this when it comes to payroll. And there, first off, let me put it out there that there is no doubt by the board that there is an issue with payroll, okay? There's no...
It's not a trust issue.
It's not a trust issue at all with our two employees, because you have both sacrificed and given a lot to this district. What we want to do is maintain our trust with the public in saying that there is a checks and balances there. So one of the things I did last month is I came in and I reviewed the payroll time and attendance with them both. I'm willing to keep doing that for the future as a checks and balance, so to speak, and obviously I can't take action on my own because I am just one person, but I can do the checks and balances, and if I have a concern, I can bring it to the entire board. So that way we have a check and balance and some oversight and, and, and a process, and that, that's simply all it is. So that's what happened, that's the discussion, comments, suggestions, concerns from the board, please.
I think that's fine, thank you.
I think it's good.
Yeah, I think that's great, thank you.
All right, that's simple, so we will continue going forward with me coming in before payroll, Julie and the three of us sitting down and having that discussion. Thank you very much for your understanding. All right, new business finished, staff reports. There wasn't a whole lot on there?
No, it wasn't really, it's just the, what I gave you guys, the follow-up questions you guys had, that I realized as I was sitting here, I did not put the attorney cost on there. Our current revenue is $300 per hour.
$300 per hour. All right.
Never mind, I was going to ask, how much do you guys cost? Never mind.
It's a lot of money.
And thanks Julie for printing the resolution for me.
Of course. Oh, and one of it, it's not anywhere in my notes, but I do need to get in touch with the state and find out what we need to do to change the district name for our business license. That's due for renewal by the end of next month.
And how much will that cost?
I believe it's $300.
Okay. And then Julie, do you want me to take the resolution, it's a staff report, do you want me to take the resolution down or will you be able to?
Um, if you have time, it would be perfect since I am off island all day tomorrow. Or I can do it on Monday.
Do you have time to do it?
I know, you guys had discussed back before.
I know, I said I would do it, so I had volunteered to do it, I'll do it, because I'm going to be an own partner.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, as I do for seniors tonight after this.
Do we have, are we going to have, there's a letter?
If I need to do it, I can do it.
You sure?
We just signed, just went around and we signed, got it.
Don't we have to have a letter to Ms. Kreider that we usually, we give her a letter that goes with it, I thought? Oh, nope, sorry, that's from the attorney, never mind, he sends it back to us.
Okay.
As long as someone tells me what to do, I, I can do it.
So we'll get that to the county tomorrow, thank you very much. No other staff reports? Matt, any big issues maintenance-wise?
Everything's still off.
So the broken window, let's talk about the broken window real quick. We never got a cost for the broken window out here in the atrium. We did not find a rock or anything else. We replaced it for how much?
We are waiting for the last company to come and give an estimate so that we can determine whether it's worth filing an insurance claim.
Or paying, because our deductible is 500?
It's a thousand.
Our deductible's a thousand. And the cost of the window, we, we're not sure, okay?
I would guess about a thousand dollars.
Well, this window right here, which is kind of the same but different, was 400 and I think it was like $93.
Right.
Those are a little bit bigger, so you double it, you're living on, we're still under a thousand, so yeah, we need to eat it.
Awesome. Thank you for coming in and cleaning it up as quickly as you did, thank you for identifying it, and as a quick note on staff reports, your husband's still coming in and walking you in and out at night?
If my cousin is available, I guess.
Okay, and I know I talked to some friends of mine that wear a different color badge and that the couch disappeared and our vagrants disappeared. I'd like to thank OHPD and Sergeant Carter for that. So have you had any more problems at the skate park or...
I haven't noticed anything. I was informed that we have an electrical outlet somewhere out there that kids use to charge their phones. Yeah, I was just informed of that yesterday. I know.
Is there's no way, is probably no way to turn that off, is there?
No, no.
Is there a circuit we could close maybe on a loop?
Well, that's, yeah, that circuit's connected to other circuits.
I mean, we are, we are a tax-supported district and I don't know, maybe being able to charge their phone and call mommy and daddy is a good thing, I don't know.
I'm not concerned about that so much as a safety concern if they were to have other issues.
So there's no way to isolate the plug though?
No.
Okay. We got a locking cap, yeah?
Yeah, we're going to have to put a locking cap and is buying locking cap worth?
How much is a locking cap, do we know? I might donate one.
I have no idea.
Good suggestion.
Yeah, why don't you just go ahead and an electrician cuts the circuit off, take the outlet out, cap off of the wires, because this will be giving you the electricity outlet. Put this on or back in place, it won't be functioning, the wires are capped off, you need safety standards. You don't have to worry about a locking cap, you don't have to worry about a lock cap for anything that expense. Plug's still going to be there, it's not going to work, we're going to walk away. You don't have to worry about it like sticking a knife or anything else in the outlet, it wasn't shorted there.
Something to look at. Get a quote. If nothing else, get quotes, please. Any other staff reports, comments on staff reports from the commission? Thank you both again for all that you do and your limited time that you, and all the hours that you do put in, I appreciate it. Final board comments, Commissioner Holly?
Nothing.
Commissioner Harden?
Nothing.
Commissioner Shing?
I found this, PDC interpretation guidelines for local government agencies and election campaigns that Commissioner Holly had printed for me, and I'm not going to lie, I probably didn't read the whole thing before, but now I did, right? It's like things appear in your life at the right time. But anyway, if anyone else would like a copy of it, it, it has great charts and I don't know if you have it as well, but you have it?
No.
Oh, you don't. We can absolutely make some copies, assuming participative equipment, but it has like, it basically just has things like what you can and can't do depending on who you are, whether you're an employee or this or that, which just might be helpful guidelines for us moving forward, just so that we know that gee, if I'm, you know, if, if as part of the levy committee, I'm asking Julie to do something and she can say, if, if I ask the inappropriate thing, she can say, no, you can't, I can't do that, or whatever, but anyway, so copy after.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffmeyer? Okay, yes, final comments, one, thank you all for coming. Julie, you'll have the exact things I asked for and you and I will talk afterwards, okay? So you can have a sidebar about timelines and what we're going to do. I'll say I owe you words for the interim director verbiage, so we'll get that done in the next day or two, I'll have it to you for Monday, all right? You all owe me as much as you can commitments from folks that are interested by August 16th, so start beating the bushes, we'll put that on Facebook and on our webpage if we can. And then we have a community workshop followed by a special meeting on August the 9th. So we all need to review budget and soft opening and then everything thereof, really look at numbers, drill down as much as you can, use 2017, unfortunately, that's what we're going to have to go off of as far as assumptions, but be very particular where you take that, that number from when you look at 2017. That's what we've got for our homework between now and the 9th. That's all I have, our next meeting is now going to be the workshop and special meeting on August the 9th at 18, pardon me, 6:30 PM, and our next regular meeting is Thursday, August 23rd at 6:30 PM. That's all we have on the agenda, do I have any other motions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you.